Well, Brandon, I think we're going to go ahead and get started. And I'm assuming Sunny will jump in as quickly as she can. Because she's watching for Ms. Stephanie's email. So let's go ahead and get started. Good evening, Commission and staff. It is Wednesday, December 10th. And we are opening up study session for Planning and Zoning Commission. And we have a presentation from our planning manager, Brandon. So go ahead, Brandon, take it away.
Thank you, Commissioner Hogan, Brandon Camerata with the planning manager. So hopefully, like I said, I'll try to walk through this presentation and introduce, you know, kind of my thought process and, and open it up for discussion. You know, I think, um, you know, what are our goals for this? You know, I'll go into a little bit of history of how we got here and why we're having this discussion. But we'll, we'll talk a little bit about appeals and, and things like that and, and the record and how motions and votes affect that record. But really, I think it's part of an ongoing discussion. So, um, I added this slide is, is kind of things that I kept coming back to. And it made me thoughts for you all to have as we walk through the presentation. And, you know, the context of the presentation being, um, from time to time, uh, some of your decisions or our decisions, meaning some of our administrative decisions can be appealed. And when they get appealed to the city council, uh, we're relying on, on the record substantially. And so, uh, when, when we're, when things get appealed and, and maybe it was, uh, maybe you all voted consistent with staff recommendation. You know, the, the record's pretty clear because, you know, we have the staff report and you're, you're all discussion being consistent with, with that staff report. And so the record's pretty clear. If, if there's a, a difference between your all opinion and staff's opinion, then that's where there's kind of a little more responsibility to help clarify that record. Cause there's two pieces to that record. Things that are in the staff report and then the things that you identified that are maybe different than that. And so how do we, how do we think about those things? And so thinking in that last context, that last context is where there's a little more responsibility and a little more work on your part to, to make, to create that record. And so key pieces here are motions, votes, and then using, um, I guess the most defensible resources ideally. Um, and so keep those thoughts in mind as we kind of walk, walk through those things. And again, motions, if I'm doing a motion contrary to the staff motion, number one, that's fine. That's great. But it requires a little, uh, you have the responsibility of identifying the criteria that you have concerns about, that you have a different finding than staff has presented to you. Similarly, votes are then supporting or not supporting the motion. And so anytime you're voting, that might be, you can't completely, you're not, you're voting maybe contrary to what's in the staff report and you were voting and you can't lean on what's in the staff report. Then, then you have more of a responsibility to say, well, why am I voting contrary to, to what's in the staff report? And, and help support, uh, potentially a motion or, or things like that. So we'll keep hitting on these. And so I don't need to explain all of them right now. Cause I, I think it'll kind of repetitively, um, we'll keep talking about those ideas. So, um, you know, I think part of this discussion ideally is part of Planning Commission 101, where we kind of maybe have a training every year and talk about these ideas in general, in a general sense. But I think it came to be a little more particular, um, after the last appeal, the QuickTrip appeal. And certainly, um, myself and Janine and Lena met with the chair and vice chair, Commissioner Walls and Commissioner Hogan and talked about, uh, the process and some of the things. And so that's the primary genesis of this meeting is to begin a more robust discussion about that. Some other kind of smaller things that we've already started to do in the context of acknowledging these sort of circumstances. If we get an appeal, we're, we're going to start using transcripts, um, to send along to that appeal. And along with that, you know, be able to, as I mentioned, we're carrying forward the record. And so being able to reference more clearly that, uh, well, how do I, as a commission, as a city council member, well, what was Planning Commission's rationale? Well, that rationale is going to be most precisely laid out in the transcript and in the minutes. And making sure that's a prominent part of the record and, and available for them. And then also, uh, I would say on the front end, meaning when we're coming to you, and this is always a work in progress, is to continue to do a good job and an improving job, a better job of, uh, addressing the criteria in a non cookie cutter sort of format and a, in a, a unique format that's unique to whatever project is in front of you. And so I think that's an ongoing effort, um, that we've re-engaged as well. So appeals, uh, it's in our UDO. And, uh, you can see the top part. It talks about the, the city council upholding, modifying, or overturning a decision. Okay. Who can appeal? Obviously, the applicant, typically the landowner, you know, of the property that may have gotten denied or something. Or a, uh, landowner that is essentially noticed. And noticed would be the adjacent landowners. And adjacent has a definition relative to notice in the UDO. And effectively it is adjacent landowners and landowners across the street. If, if there's a street right in front of you. And so if you're noticed, uh, you have standing to appeal. If you're part of that adjacentcy, doesn't apply to some of the HOA notices and, and things like that. And kind of the idea, I guess, well, I'll mention that different communities have different approaches to appeals. This isn't some sort of manifestation of state statute that you have to have appeals and they have to look like this. Most communities have different, slightly different approaches to an, an appeal structure and what have you. And then I guess the concept of bringing forward the record is kind of like, like a, a 106 appeal. Like if it goes beyond the city council. So basically, and, and, you know, if somebody, um, brings a suit against a decision after all appeals have been made, you know, those things are based entirely on the record. And, you know, there's not new information into the discussion with those. So that's kind of the, the concept there. So how often do we do appeals? Not very often. These are appeals from the last two years, 24 and 25. So we have three of them. And the last one's not even an appeal, it's a call-up. So really we have two appeals in the last two years. Roughly speaking, you all have about 50 items a year. So, you know, a hundred items, you know, less than 5% of the items are going to be appealed or have been historically. And-
Brandon, can I, what is the difference between a call-up and an appeal? I mean, what's, explain a call-up to me. I, I apologize.
A call-up is requested by city council directly. It's not an appeal made by one of the people that I identified.
So council's calling it up and they're calling it up because of the decision that we made or?
I don't know. I, I mean, there's not, um, a, a direct reason in code that says this is why I'm calling it up. It's just basically their prerogative.
Okay. But we approved bubbles, right?
Yes.
Okay. All right. I'm just trying to make sure I'm on the right page.
So, um, so kind of building off that, so okay, we, we have appeals very rarely, but they do happen. And so you all, you never know when they're going to be. And so you always want to prepare the record accordingly. And so what, what comes before you all now? You know, largely these three items now, you know, as you recall, we kind of got away from the situation where we're bringing you a lot of site plans. Unless that site plan has a conditional use or a major adjustment, right? And so we kind of moved away from that situation where, um, we're just bringing you a site plan and they meet all the standards. And okay, well, what do we want to talk about here? And so that makes kind of a harder discussion. So right now, these are more discretionary pieces here. They're, they're here and, and for a conditional use and you're more familiar with those criteria. You get a fair amount of conditional uses. Major adjustments, um, when we get a project that comes before you, that's a site plan with a major adjustment. Okay, well, what's this, what's the criteria for a site plan approval by itself? It's just to meet code. Okay. But if it's to you with an adjustment, then okay, well, how are you, how are they approaching the adjustment? And these are those criteria for that. And, and I think we've tried to ramp up our approach with that too. I think the most recent example would be like the cottages. We really tried to hit on, um, what were they complying with some of these criteria for an adjustment? And then master plans are a new thing that, you know, we've added, kind of flipped it over. Less site plans, more master plans. And so I think you've only had one, which was the Green Valley Ranch Amendment a couple of weeks ago. But that is an item that will come before you and it has criteria as well. So now I'm going to talk just briefly then before the motion, the motion and after the motion. So before the motion is you're collecting information. So that can be before the meeting, during the meeting, before the motion. Hopefully we're all doing that in an ex parte sort of framework. And what, how are we collecting information? We're looking at staff report. We're reviewing the comp plan where we think, you know, maybe I need to reference something with the comp plan relative to this project if I have a question. We're using the UDO, obviously standards, purpose and intents with the UDO. Your site visits, um, I'll say Google Earth is like a site visit. If you use those sort of things to view the context of a neighborhood and things like that. Um, and then in the meeting, you know, public testimony. So those are the things that are occurring before the motion. You're collecting information. You're not making opinions or adding things to the record from your standpoint. You're, you're collecting things. So typically commissioners are only gathering information, not discussing their opinions or intentions prior to the motion. All right. So the motion, um, this is just kind of a snip of, you know, you have a cheat sheet that says if you, if you want to do staff's motion, here's, here's a script to read, read for that. And then it kind of gives you an alternative motion. And I think this whole process has been good for me, um, to read kind of that alternative motion there. I think we probably can take a look at that and, and make sure it jives with our discussion today. And that discussion's not finished. So, um, we can circle back to this if y'all have questions. But I'll keep, I'll keep marching forward a little bit to finish up the thoughts. So making the motion, you know, uh, there, there's a lot of ways, a lot of nuance to think about each, each consideration of a motion. Motion to approve consistent with staff recommendation. Motion to approve that's contrary staff recommendation. Motion to approve with new conditions. Motion to deny that is consistent with staff condition, staff recommendation. Motion to deny this contrary. So restating the obvious, there's, you know, different things there. But as I kind of went through those thought processes, again, the part that requires some additional responsibility for the record is when, when you're contrary, which is fine, to the staff report, then you kind of are on the hook to start creating more record. Ideally. So that's, that's kind of the take home there a little bit, or at least my opinion on, on, on how I perceive this process. So when you make the motion, so this is kind of then getting into the nuts and bolts. And so as I was thinking through this process, you know, so at a bare minimum, I think when you're making the motion, you want to at least identify the criteria that you have a concern with. So, so depending on which side, approve, deny, uh, consistent, being not consistent with the, the staff opinions, then you need to at least identify those criteria that, that you feel like there probably should be alternative findings for. I'll say, then my next part is then, I think there's opportunity to flesh that out after the motion's made. So I know it's a stressful situation to be on the hook to make a contrary motion and broach those criteria and then come up with reasons. I mean, that's a lot of stuff going on. I feel like there's opportunity after the motion is made to then fill in some of the reasoning for those motion, those criteria of concern. So I'll, I'll touch on that. Hopefully that'll make more sense. So then after the motion. So no matter what, after the motion, we probably don't want dead silence in a vote. Even if it's a, a case where your all motion is following staff recommendation. You know, that's more also the perception for, for the, for the audience too. To, to make sure they have the perception, they feel like you're considering things and, and being thoughtful and, uh, having discussion and those things. And it kind of just builds, um, uh, muscle memory too there. So when you do have, um, a more contentious situation, everybody's used to, to having that discussion after the motion. But let's say the motion is contrary to staff recommendation. If you're going to be supporting that motion that is contrary to the staff recommendation, you know, help that person who made that motion by saying, what are the reasons that we need to have different findings, um, for, for that? So hopefully the person who made the motion said, you know, I have concerns over criteria three and five. You know, there might be more criteria that you guys can identify after the motion. But then you all need to kind of, if you're supporting that motion maker, then you all need to help contribute to, to that record of, of why those particular criterion maybe need a different finding than what staff presented you all. So, you know, it kind of can be a team, team effort to try to make those contributions to support whatever that motion was. On the flip side too, though, um, the idea being, being contrary, um, if, if you want to vote, let's say, let's say we have the motion maker made a motion consistent with staff recommendation. But you as an individual, you know, I, I don't agree with that. And you're going to vote no. And, you know, maybe you're a minority decision when it's all said and done. You don't know that as you're making your vote, certainly, right? Uh, so if you're going to vote no, then, then you need to do that same similar process to say, you know what? The motion maker made a motion, uh, from staff recommendation. I disagree with that motion. I have concerns over criteria three and five. And these are the reasons that I have for that. So, so that's a situation too, where if you're going to be kind of well called a descending, descending opinion of sorts. You know, the best case scenario is, is for you to, to make that a little bit of a reason why, a reason why, if you can. And so those are, those are kind of the, the thought processes that I had kind of working through this. So after the motion, that's where most of the, the record's going to be built if we have a contrary sort of, uh, situation. I pretty much covered this. So I mentioned earlier, resources, you know, so okay, what, what am I, what should I be talking about? If I'm going to, um, be talking after the motion? These are my thoughts and this is how staff approaches things. You know, we try to use resources that are, are part of the city's toolbox of, of, um, discussion. You know, so obviously, you know, resource are things that may have occurred during the public hearing. Resources are your staff report. Resources are your site visit, the UDO, Aurora Places and other adopted plans. So in a perfect world, you know, you're able to say, you know what? I disagree with this. I'm concerned with criteria in three and five. And the comprehensive plan says these sort of things. And I don't feel these sort of things are being met in this project. You know, that would be an ideal sort of way to, to do that. And that's my recommended sort of way, um, you, you have to do that. So again, I'll say, these are my observations and kind of thoughts. It's not to say there's only one way to do these things, but that's kind of how, as I walked through this, that's how I thought about it. So I think I'm pretty much near the end of my dissertation. There I'm restating, you know, those, these are just the projects that we see in those criteria. So I kind of want to open it up to you all to see if, if those ideas resonate, make, make sense. And, and certainly I'll acknowledge that there's an if and then, or there's what about this and what about that? Yeah, there's a million of those that probably can be found for every circumstance. But this maybe is a starting point to think about, um, these, these decisions. So I'll stop thankfully.
Thank you, Brandon. Missioners, questions? I see Commissioner Bankus hand up first and then they'll, we'll go to Commissioner Riley. Go ahead.
Okay. I, I, I'm going to try to be as diplomatically appropriate as Brandon was. You know, I, I really kind of feel based on discussions. And maybe I'm wrong and correct me if I'm wrong. But by time it gets to us, you all have vetted it. I mean, you have vetted it. There's really not, I mean, the fact that there were 11 gas stations and we questioned that, well, we learned very quickly, that's not our job. Our job is to focus on the UDO, which by time you get stuff to us, it's very well vetted. You know, I'm just trying to think, you know, I mean, whether we like it, don't like it, question it, whatever. I almost feel like there's really not a whole lot of open door to voice an opinion to it. And am I wrong on that? I mean, I know council makes the ultimate decision. And I know you guys bring it to us in great shape. You have, you've crossed every T and dotted every I. And so I almost feel like, you know, there's really nothing to question. And I think the biggest question that we've had is what about the neighborhood? Well, if it meets the UDO, it doesn't matter about the, from our perspective, and correct me if I'm wrong, it doesn't matter about the neighborhood. I mean, we could have 900 people get on a mirror and say it's a horrible thing. But you know what? If it meets the UDO, we've got to approve it. Am I, am I thinking clearly or not? You know, because I'm thinking about the two car washes next door that, you know, the QuickTrip at Havana, you know? Those are not our options at all.
I understand the question.
Okay.
Janine, you have your hand raised.
I was gonna say, can I take this one, Brandon?
And I'm not trying, please no, I'm not trying to be a rebel rouser.
Understand the question, but whether it's conditional use or a major adjustment. Number seven, you have these very broad subjective criteria mitigates any adverse impact. So if you think one more gas station is adversely impacting the neighborhood, your motion should say, we move to deny because the criteria seven has not been met. One more gas station adversely impacts because, and then say your rationale.
So, so, so we can still do that? Cause after the whole Havana thing, I got the impression that, wow, we were way off track, way overstepping our boundary. And maybe that was just my interpretation. So, I mean, I'll speak for myself, that was my interpretation.
And, and that's where putting it on the record, why we're going to put the transcript in instead of the abbreviation. So we don't have to guess. The, the city council can read it. And Lena, before I kick it off to you, I wanted to add one more thing to Brandon's presentation. When you're doing your fact finding, especially during the hearing, make sure your questions address criteria. And I've said this before, and Sunny, I love you. Please, please, whether an apartment building's for rent or for sale doesn't address criteria unless you can tie it to the criteria. I could be wrong, so Lena.
Okay. Well, and I, I, I realize that's not a basis of approval. That's just my curiosity, but I won't ask the question if I'm not.
Maybe ask after the motion's been decided. Just say, hey, I'm curious. That way we keep a clean record. I just, the, the recovering attorney in me wants a very solid record. Cause as Brandon pointed out, if we get a section 106, it's on the record. And if there's any question, I don't know how the courts are going to look at that here. I'm going to throw it to Lena.
So before you do, so I'm hearing that I should not ask if it's for rent or for sale. I mean, until after we've made a decision?
That is the best. Unless you can tie it to criteria. If you think that one more apartment building in, in this area adversely impacts the neighborhood, make the case.
Okay. So, and, and I'm sorry, I don't want to dominate this, but, but because that was specifically called out and I do do it a lot. In my mind, it does impact. We are so overglutted with apartments right now and we just keep building them right and left. And, you know, and they're right now, I'm like, property managers are crying. They cannot get people in vacancies and, you know, anyway. And there's a bill that they want to do a penalty if you've got vacant property. Well, you have vacant property, you can't fill the units because there's so much overbuilt. So in my mind, building all this for rent stuff is going to bite us. So it would fall under seven in my mind. But my mind may not be working like your mind. And I'm trying to make sure that my mind is working the way it's supposed to be working. And I'm asking the questions I'm supposed to. Because clearly that's created a problem with the for rent or for sale. For sale condos we need, for rent apartments, I think we've got a lot of them. But that's just, you know, I do the statistics every month, but that's just my opinion.
Lena. Okay. So Janine, if you want to respond, then we're going to go to Lena and then we're going to go to Commissioner Riley. And then I did see, um, Chair Walls with his hand up. So let's do that. Lena, you're-
I think we can have a philosophical debate on too many apartments, not enough. It is cyclical. Again, tie it to criteria. And especially when you ask your, the question, but then it doesn't impact. I, I don't know. It just, make sure your questions are fact finding for the decision. And Lena, help me out here. I'm just pretending to be attorney.
So what I was going to start with just responding to was the, the conversation of whether or not it matters and, and, you know, what council makes a decision on. So obviously there is some room in, in, for interpretation in some of the criteria. They are, um, I wouldn't call them, vague, maybe not the right word, but there is some room for interpretation in how you read the criteria. The, the flip side of that is that council then has the right under the UDO to then review your decision and an appeal. And they can, um, approve it. They can approve with conditions. They can overturn it. So there is room for them also to have discretion. And so that's why you all may feel like- And so that's why you all may feel like you made one decision based on the criteria. Council has the prerogative to make a different decision. And it's a different group of people reviewing the criteria and, and the facts, and applying those facts to the criteria based on the record, but they do have some discretion for de novo review, which in legal terms is essentially new review, right? They, they have that discretion. And so despite what you all have made a decision, they have that ability as well to review the criteria and make their own determination based on the facts. So, you know, it's not about them, you know, saying you're, you know, wrong, or, you know, that you have to follow what staff says, or that your decision doesn't matter. Just remember that that is their prerogative to do that.
Oh, sure, I understand that. I mean, I get that, they, I, I said that, I did say that, that I realized that, you know, they have the ultimate final, I get that.
Commissioner Riley?
Thank you, I had a couple of questions. Having been on for short term, have we had contrary motions in the past? I'm just curious if, if anybody has, has brought those up before.
The answer is yes, we have. We have not had a lot of them. I would say in the last 18 months, we have had more than in the past three or four years. I think that the one that stands out to me, and Brendan, I can't remember the name, it was in Ward six, Francois's Ward, I know it wasn't East Bank, it was basically apartments or condos in six. I just can't recall.
Okay.
But that was, that was a situation where the ward council member voted against the motion, but the remainder of council supported that, so it did indeed get built.
I think he was asking specifically, we had contrary motions here at the planning commission. And yes, we've had a few contrary to the staff findings.
I'm sorry.
Namely, the most recent one was the Red Rocks Autos. And, and that was a negative motion. It wasn't a motion to pass, and then we voted it down. It was a, a contrary motion.
And it was because somebody had specifically provided reasons, like item number seven, that was referred to on page, on slide 17, the adverse impacts or something of that nature?
Correct, and it was because their car, public testimony in the car layout was next to an abutting neighborhood. And so we felt that the adverse impacts hadn't been mitigated to the surrounding community having for sale cars right next to a residential community.
Okay, and Brandon, you mentioned team effort. So if, how do we do a team effort if, if we believe that some of the conditions aren't being met when we're supposed to not be deliberating with each other? I'm just curious as to what you mean by team effort? If somebody was going to come in and say, you know, I question, again, I look at slide 17, under the, under the conditional use requirements. You know, how do we preclude us from having dialogues amongst each other if, if we're not supposed to do that?
Thank you, Chair, Vice Chair through you. Yeah, I think what I meant by that was after the motion, you know, don't leave the person making that motion that might be contrary to staff, don't leave all the responsibility to that person to try to create the record. You know, if you're going to support that motion after the motion's been made, then, then come up with supporting information that says, I agree with the, the motion maker, and I also have concerns with criteria three and five for these reasons. And so, you know, don't put all that responsibility on the motion maker to come up with all the reasons to, to present to everybody. So that's what I meant by teamwork. So thank you, teamwork after the motion has been made, when you're having your discussion after the motion.
Okay, and then there was, you know, a, a little note about agreeing on vetting beforehand. So you know, and other people who are in the municipal center know, if I got a question, I'm going to call you. If I have something I need to dig in, I mean, I've talked to Chair Walls as well, I've talked to you. Again, I'm trying to become more educated on this whole process. So if, if we feel, again, I go to slide 17 on conditional uses, if we feel there's a concern, there's no objection to us calling you or staff to get a better appreciation for how they went about coming up with their recommendations. Because again, I, I find staff does a, a very good job, as was previously said, on vetting everything. So sometimes it's almost, it's almost impossible to say, well, I, I disagree with you. But again, you've, you've educated us on the conditional use slide. I, I think I'm going to be looking at some of these packets with a little different approach now. And again, I, you know, I will continue to ask questions of staff prior, just so I can get a better appreciation of the U D O and other impacts. So I just wanted to mention that.
And I think that's great if there's something specific. I try to do that, I always don't do that. But I would also say that I, I feel free enough with this commission that if I disagree with Commissioner Jedjic, I'm just picking somebody, that I'm free to state my disagreement. You know, we have looked at, that we have different perspectives, we have different objective thought at times, and that's okay too. It's not personal, it's not something that, oh my gosh, I can never talk to Gail because we disagreed on this. There are just times that we will disagree. But I think, you know, both Janine and Brandon's point is state the reason why. Don't just say, I disagree.
Okay, I, I, those are my questions, I, I don't have any more after that.
I think just adding on, and I think Brandon would appreciate me saying this. You know, if you, when you're going through your packet and when you're doing your site visit, if you've got some specific questions about the application that you want a subject matter expert from staff to be there, rather than asking the question via email or calling, because we want your question to be part of the record and happen during the meeting, it's a great idea to always email me, email Becky, email Brandon, or email Stephanie or Susan, or all of the above, and say, hey, I'm going to have a question about traffic. Can we make sure that we have a traffic representative present? Or I've got a life safety question, can we make sure that somebody is prepared to answer a life safety question? Or something like that, and that helps Brandon kind of make sure that the team is assembled to be able to answer those, those questions.
Other questions by commissioners?
I think I just had more of a comment than a question, Vice Chair. I, I think what made it really difficult for us with the bubble car wash application was that we were sort of subject to an attorney representing the applicant, giving us tacit threats as to the fact that we couldn't find any adverse impacts with the surrounding neighborhood. That was made pretty clear to us by Mr. Foster, that in fact, we had to find on behalf of his applicant and on behalf of this application, or he was prepared to proceed further. And I, I don't know, we obviously can't control what we receive or what we hear during testimony, but that was wholly inappropriate. And I think that it's helpful, I think, in those times, if either Director Rustad, or Brandon, or Lena, if someone pops in, and it, it's helpful to help redirect the commission. In that way, what, what our legal responsibilities are for the legal representation that we have on behalf of the city. It gets a little dicey for me when I have an attorney on the other side of my screen telling me how I can vote, or how I can't vote. And that's a matter of the record.
Lena?
Um, yeah, I understand. And I would just say, like, obviously, we can't tell somebody what to say in their public testimony. You know, but I would say, always remember that you all, all you are required to do is to base your decision on the criteria. And again, as with the council being able to call up or somebody appealing, you know, obviously, that is their right. And if they don't feel like you followed the criteria, then they can file an appeal or file a 106. You know, that's part of the process. All you can do as a commission is make sure that you feel that you have applied the facts to the criteria, and that you have been clear in your decision as to why you feel it meets or doesn't meet the criteria. Mr. Foster is, is allowed to have his opinion about whether or not the, you know, the application does or does not meet the criteria. Your role is to decide if you all feel it does or does not. And, and, you know, obviously, it's difficult to have someone say that to you, but I would say, you know, in that, in the circumstance, listen to your, to your own, your own sort of feelings and thoughts about the criteria and the facts, and, and don't be intimidated by, that's, you know, he's a good attorney, he's good at advocating for his client, that's his job, that's what he gets paid for. And he gets paid a lot of money to do that. So he's going to be good at that. And I would just say, you know, don't, don't feel that you need to listen to that. You know, someone can always appeal it, someone can always do a 106. It's not a reflection necessarily on, on you all and on your decision, as long as you've done a good job of being diligent in that decision. And I will always remind you, if I feel like you are getting off course, or, you know, that, that there's a concern with, you know, maybe that it's being arbitrary or capricious in the decision. Like if you all deny an application and don't say why, or, you know, don't follow the staff report, I will usually pipe in and say, hey, you all, you really need to put some reasoning as to why you are finding this decision one way or the other. And, and I will direct that back to that.
And staff is also doing a better job, I think, and Chair Walls, you had asked for this, putting the criteria up as you make your motion and have your deliberations. And Lena's spot on, he's getting paid to do a job. And just as you can disagree with staff, you can disagree with attorneys. Sorry, Lena.
I'll accept it in this circumstance.
So question. Sometimes I feel this is clear, sometimes I don't feel this is clear. The question is, does city council understand that they have to follow the same criteria on an appeal that planning commission follows? Because they can get way off in terms of.
Legal council is working, so Lena, Pete Schulte are working very diligently to advise council on ex parte matters, because that is where they're at times getting themselves either in hot water or getting close to crossing a line. And this is why, as Brandon said, we're putting more effort into why we think criteria are met or are not met. That way, they have it in front of them as well. So I don't know if you want to add in anything into that, Lena? I don't know if you've been in more of those trainings. I had asked about this in our city management meeting, because we're onboarding four new council members.
Right. Yeah. Um, so I think I would just concur with what Janine says, we're working on trying to make sure that's clear to council members. I think that I have been in conversations with Pete about making sure that council stays on track with the criteria and their questions as well when things are presented to them. Like Janine mentioned, we are trying to be more comprehensive in the packet that is going to council and making sure that it is very clear what the criteria is and why planning commission made the decision that they made, so that they can see that and see your reasoning, and see the staff's reasoning, whether it aligns with you all or not, just so that, that information is available to them. And making sure that the criteria is also on the screen, you know, in the, in the presentation to plant, to the council as well, so that they can see that criteria.
But the bottom line to my question is, yes, Becky, city council has to go by the same criteria as what planning commission. Okay, so nobody's like switching out the game.
Does not change based on who's reviewing the application, whether or not it's Janine making an administrative decision, whether it's you all making a decision, whether it's council, the criteria does not change.
Okay, thank you. Commissioner Jedjic, see your hand up.
Yep, I, I struggle with this all the time. I'm a neighbor, and I'm also very supportive of the businesses after running the business of Rimba District for 12 years. So I have to try to take myself out of that and look at the criteria. So I think this was really helpful to me. The other thing, I, I have been taking, Ernie Schultz, he, he can't, he has really bad eyes, and he has to go down to Laundrie for his appointments. I think I've driven him down there five times now. And every time he brings up a, a subject of one of the cases, I say, no, I can't talk about that. But if it's an old case, he still bugs me, says, why, why did you guys, the neighbors don't want this? Why, why didn't you support it? Well, I have to tell him, it's the criteria. So I don't know, do we need to educate the neighbors somehow, the neighborhood groups with the same information that we just got? I don't know if that would help or not.
Brandon, Janine?
You know, I think ideally, you know, it's, it's community conversation, you know, as community has more and more experience dealing with growth and, and whether it be infill, it's pretty much all, it's infill. You know, that's why there's more discussions out east now, because now there's people living out east. And so now people are concerned about what's going on next to them. And so, you know, it's always a challenge, especially in such a large community, geographically, as well as population, to have those discussions. So I think I look at it from an opportunistic point of view of, you know, whenever we have the chance to communicate to people, we try to communicate in, in those sort of frameworks and let people know that, you know, that there is a framework here, you know, that starts with the comprehensive plan to try to get these general ideas together of where things are appropriate and where things aren't appropriate, and then drills down to the zoning code and all those things. And so, you know, I think, I think we're all ambassadors to a degree of, of that process.
And I'll add to that, Brandon, that with a population of 414 plus and all our businesses who may have an interest, I think what the chair is doing before public testimony, directing that public testimony should address the criteria, which you need to base your decision on, because we could do all the public engagement in the world. It's only going to matter to people when it's next door to them, their neighborhood. So we'll hit it as many ways as we can.
Last minute questions? When, I do have one, when is the last time we reviewed distance requirements for public notification?
I'm going to take this one. I actually do want to, with the help of Brandon's team, they don't let me run solo over here, but look at our notice requirements, look who has standing to appeal. But then with that, have what in Oregon was called raise it or wave it. Because you, as the initial deciding body, should have that first bite at the apple to decide something. So if they think notice wasn't appropriate, they should raise that to you. Or if they think criteria wasn't, seven wasn't met, they should raise that to you, not new, raise a new issue at city council.
Okay, but I was talking maybe a little more functionally, because I am surprised. I mean, honestly, it used to be, there were always neighborhood meetings, always. And I don't know if the pandemic interrupted that or what. And then, of course, you get those folks, and, you know, I totally get this part. Well, I didn't know anything was going to happen until I saw a yellow sign, you know, and those kinds of things. But I just want to make sure, A, you know, we count on people sending out the notifications. B, is the distance requirement enough? And C, yeah, go ahead.
We will look at that distance requirement. We are sending. We will look at that distance requirement. Uh, we are sending notices as required. And then um for public or neighborhood meetings. There's several checks along the way, that if there is a lot of neighborhood speaking up. We will require that, because we want the applicant, at least my point of view. The applicant to hear directly from the public, have the opportunity to address, to have the strongest case when it comes to you. Lena, anything to add to that? I saw you pop up.
Bob has his hands up for a little.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah, I have a question. We had a piece of property that had two sides. And one side, the sign blew away. And I remember Brandon saying, oh, that doesn't matter. Doesn't matter.
As far as yellow sign proper notification, that's what you're talking about.
Yep, that's what I'm talking about. I mean, if if someone drives down one side of the street and not the other side, they're never gonna see the other side.
Correct. And and I raised that last meeting, too, that one of the signs was down, which is why I asked about the picture. And then the other one was so far set back, I don't feel it was justifiable, justifiably able to be read. And 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 Brandon, I had also asked a question about uh the neighborhood notices. I will tell you that. No one in my community got that notice. And I asked specifically in October of twenty-three to be put on a list. This before I got involved with planning, so that I knew I would see things. So I don't think the developers are doing their earnest. In getting notifications out.
Lena, do you have a comment? And then I'd like to have a response to Commissioner Riley's question.
Um, I I was just gonna mention that the, just a reminder that the. The notice thing, yes, we are looking, we're going to look into those distance requirements and some of those changes. Um. That's been the same, I think, since twenty twenty. I don't know if just like. People's engagement is down and that's part of why we're not getting as much comment. Um, but whether or not we have a. Um, sorry, I just got distracted by Gail's dog. Um. Um, whether or not there's a neighborhood meeting is is related to how much um response we get from the community. So there could be some correlation or connection there, or it could just be that there's not as much public engagement as there was. You know, so public engagement kind of comes and goes in in uh in sort of cyclical. Um, and some areas are more engaged than others in some neighborhoods. So, um, you know, we do base our decision on whether or not. To acquire a neighborhood meeting on that, um, on the code requirements. Um, so it's not as if we are not holding neighborhood meetings when there should be. It's just that we're not getting comments. And so we're not holding neighborhood meetings because of that. Um, and then I will, I will le- turn it back over to staff. To answer Commissioner Riley's questions.
Well, I think Lena also, it 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 crosses some legal lines that if a sign is blown over, is it adequate notice?
And I think it would matter when the sign got blown over. Like, did it get blown over at five P M today? You know, that's different than, did it get blown over on day one and it was never replaced? Um, so.
So Commissioner Geiser said a week before, and, you know, I mean, when I used to post signs. We had to take a picture every freaking day, which was a pain to show that that sign was still up.
So I I guess, I I I think. That'll be part of the notice discussion. I mean, and so there's. Everybody's got a different opinion about what's reasonable and what's not reasonable. Uh, do you want to put a billboard at at every property? Do you not want to put a billboard at a property? Do you want to notify a quarter mile out? Do you want to modify the whole city? Do you want to know, notify three hundred feet out? So. Everybody's gonna have a different opinion about that. So it'll be a a process. And then part of that process, yeah, we will want to talk about some some nuance about, okay, I think Commissioner Riley talking about. Like the Green Valley Ranch East Master Plan Amendment. So how do we approach a master plan amendment? So do we notify all? Uh, whatever. Ten thousand, five thousand people that live in Green Valley Ranch of a master plan amendment. It's kind of like a rezone. Of a particular place. And so those are things that we will want to clarify through through that process. Uh, it's almost like a, when we go through um. Uh, kind of legislative code amendments, where we say, we're changing the design standards in M U C zoning. To be X, Y, and Z. We don't notify everybody who has M U C zoning across the city. Uh, but we rely on kind of general notice parameters um and public outreach for those things to happen. Um, so, so I guess that's my answer to, I guess, part of your question. And then, you know, as part of that discussion, when we get into notices. Well, what are the expectations if a sign blows down, uh, you know, um, in in those sort of things? I I I think, uh, in my experience, you know, some of the biggest meetings I've ever been to, you know, where there's a hundred and fifty people. Show up, they're oftentimes complaining about notice. Well, I don't know, something happened for people to get noticed. I don't know what it was. But I'll stop there, uh, and and I I think it's a big topic of discussion that will will take some time over the course of next year.
Chair Walls, and I'm gonna have those questions stop with him.
Yep, it not a question, just to further clarify for Commissioner Bank. I think when you asked about the questions that you ask about. Uh, for sale, for rent, price, market rate, or section eight, or affordable housing. I think it's a, it's a wholly different question to ask if a development is going to be for rent or for sale. Knowing the surrounding neighborhood, whether it's from a site visit or or whatever, than it is to ask the applicant. If these are going to be market rate or affordable housing. Um, unless you have a specific tie in to one of our criterion. Um, you know, it it would be difficult to justify, well, I don't like the price, or I don't like that these are going to be market rate, so I'm gonna vote no. That's a potential area where they could appeal that decision. Whereas if you're saying that the market in that area and the surrounding neighborhood. Has a lot of inventory or a lot of units that are apartments versus for sale, and it's an apartment. That's a surrounding neighborhood, potentially an adverse impact to that surrounding neighborhood. Do you, do you see what I'm saying there? The difference in that, that one, one of those is probably more appropriate than the other question.
I don't know that I ask if it's affordable or not. I, well, maybe I do. Um, I, you know, I'm very much aware of fair housing and I'm not looking to get into fair housing violations, but. You know, I guess for rent, for sell, that's just my own curiosity, you know, and honestly, if it's surrounded by. You know, I'm looking at this, and I'm gonna be blatantly honest. You guys might want to fire me before we're done here, which has got to be pretty soon, I know. You know, I mean, if they're building apartments, well, it conforms to the neighborhood and it meets it. It's, you know, I mean. I I get the impression based on the gas station discussion. It really doesn't matter if we're overbuilding gas stations or car washes or. Or that's not, that's not my job to decide. So, you know, I've. I I've got kind of a, I don't know, my attitude is. You, I really don't have the right to ask a whole lot. I mean, if there's twenty-five other high-rise apartment buildings right there, by golly, it's a. Conforms to the neighborhood and it's not my job. So, you know, it, um, I guess, I'm.
I think.
I know what you're saying.
Yeah.
But I think what's being said isn't what's really being meant.
And I wouldn't be dissuaded from taking a position that's either for or contrary, based upon your understanding of the testimony presented. As it relates to any of the code sections. You know, you can still, if you feel like there are too many gas stations and you can state that we've heard public testimony this evening. That it would negatively impact the surrounding neighborhood. I mean, as long as you have a justification that ties in to one of our criterion. Don't be dissuaded in continuing to make that point, Commissioner. You know, you have the right to make that, just as long as you're basing it on one of the criterion. And if that's off of public testimony, or if it's on something in the packet, or the presentation that we heard during the public hearing. That's your absolute, it's not only your right, it's your responsibility as a commissioner, so.
Well, and I'm feeling, based on some of this discussion, that it's absolutely not my responsibility. And I shouldn't be saying anything. It conforms, it needs, you know, I mean. Uh, the gas station on Havana and Parker, perfect example, you know. And car washing, I mean, we're putting gas stations next to gas stations, you know, and when I have the public that go. What's the thought process beside that, besides that? Well, you know, it meets the U D O. I gotta go with it, you know? I mean, not my job. Talk to your councilperson. Here's their number. You know, I mean, that's really truly kind of where I feel, you know, um. I really honestly feel like staff does an amazing job, and I know we've got to get off so we can get back on, but. Staff does a great, great job, which leaves very little wiggle room. And and I'm not saying don't do a great, great job. They do do their job and they do it very well. So I'm feeling like, you know, if I even question the logic of what's going on, that's not appropriate.
Okay, I'm gonna cut us off. What I do here, Janine, Brandon, Lena. What I do here is that this discussion is not over with planning condition. So I would appreciate, you know, putting this, scheduling it. And Brandon, you can, you and I can work on. This or whoever's vice chair can work on exactly what things are we talking about, because. It it's been talked about at PED for ad nauseam for years, but I haven't seen anything change. So, and we've got four new council members that frankly are huge. So if you want to talk about a pendulum swing, they are huge into community voices. So if this is the first time you're hearing it. You're gonna hear it more and it's not gonna be from us. So I think that it's taking a look at how we do engage. Public as we move ahead. Okay, we've got about two or three minutes for you to shut down one bite of food and we will see you at six ten. Under the oversight of Chair Walls.
Thank you all.